Okay, seeing that it's 7:02. I'm going to open up the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the town of Halifax for June 14, 2021 via Zoom. At the meeting, attending the meeting will be Jerry Joy, Bob Durgan, Pete Poselin, Isaiah Nasrela, Dan Bosari, and we also have Charlie Sealy, the town administrator, and Alana's running a little bit late. She'll be joining us shortly. Okay, how's everybody doing? We all surviving? I got a text, Charlie, let us know that this will probably be our last Zoom meeting. Well, we should be heading back in person, at least as a board and as members of the board. So others that want to participate, I guess, can still log in and listen to the meeting and...
Well, Bert, that's only going to happen if we have the setup necessary to do that.
Oh, okay.
If you've noticed where the selectmen's meeting, for instance, Gordon and I have computers to get everything set up. It's surely possible, I'm not necessarily looking forward to having to do that, you know, if everybody wants to still do a remote hybrid. But, you know, you can, you know, we can talk about that, but the great hall will be open. So what it is, is starting in a few hours, the state of emergency ends. And so boards and committees need to meet in a physical space starting tomorrow. You can have a hybrid meeting, you can have people attending electronically, but not the board and committee members with a couple of exceptions. So the state legislature may change the law and the government may change the law later this week, in which case, you know, I'll make sure everybody knows about it. But for right now, it's a month off, well, yeah, it's a month off. We'll see how things play out.
All right, works for me. Okay, I have seen that it's 7:05. Our agenda has been forwarded by Alana to the board members. 7:05, our first appointment is petition number 944, David and Laura Gibbons of 70 Oak Street. It's an appeal of the building inspector's denial of the building permit for a wood burning stove, filed 5421. A request from Ms. Gibbons' email dated 6/21 for extension to our July meeting. I think I have a copy of that letter here. We could read it into the, into the minutes. However, it is a simple request, gentlemen. I believe due to a death in the family, they... Oh, here it is right here. No, that is not... Well, Alana did speak with the, with the applicants. And I do believe it's due to a death in the family. They asked if we could give consideration to postponing their meeting until our July meeting. When Alana comes in, she'll give us a date for our July meeting. And we'll put them on the schedule if it's okay with the board. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a motion from the board, one of the board members, to accept the request from the applicant of petition number 944, Mr. and Mrs. Gibbons of 70 Oak Street, to postpone or continue their, postpone their, their appeal meeting until our July meeting.
Bert, one thing, I have absolutely no problem with the request. And I had answered the family's attorney during the weekend. I just couldn't guarantee anything. The other thing is that you'll want to, I believe, ask for an extension, just as they're asking for the hearing to be continued or postponed to next month. You're going to need to get an extension also because I believe the 65-day period up is up on July 8th, which is going to be before your next meeting, which I believe is on July 12th.
July 12th?
Yeah, if you're going to go with your second Monday, normal schedule, July 12th is the second Monday in July. And the deadline, the 65-day period where you're supposed to make a decision is July 8th, which is, I believe, that Thursday before. So we'll want a letter from either the family representative or the family to say, yes, we agreed to extend it probably beyond July 12th because you're going to need to get the letter down to, if you make a decision on the 12th, down to the town clerk's office by more like July 22nd.
Okay. Charlie, can, can we make, if we, if the board so well votes to give the extension, can make it contingent upon the agreement from the petitioners attorney that the extension of the 65-day deadline be continued to July 12, July 22nd?
Yeah, I can give it, I believe the attorney is here, present on the attendee list, and maybe she would be able to speak on that.
Who would that be?
I think it's Attorney Kildia.
Yes, that would be me. Hi, this is Diane Kilday on behalf of the Gibbons.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Very well, thanks. I don't know if you caught the conversation with Mr. Sealy. Diane, would that be okay and acceptable to your, your clients there that you agree to the extension of the 65-day period? So that would, that would provide us with a date of July 22, 2021?
Yes, we can accept that.
All right, I mean, could I please get a letter from you for our file? Would that, would that request the extension? Well, you did send a letter for the extension that the extension to the 65-day period till July 22nd would be acceptable to your clients? That'd be awesome.
Or should I address that to the board?
Yes, please. What? All right, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I'll, I'll put a, put it out to a motion from members of the board to accept the request of the petition number 944 be extended to a July meeting, which would be July 12th, and upon receipt of a letter from Attorney Kilday that they would also agree to an extension of the 65-day period.
I'll make a motion to, based on the receipt of the letter from the applicant, to extend the petition, to continue petition 944 until July 12th. It's 7:05. I don't know if there's anything else already on it.
7:05, great, we could do that. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to extend a petition, the hearing for petition number 944, based on the letter from the applicant's attorney agreeing to an extension of the 65-day period until our July 12th hearing at 7:05. I'll call for a roll call voice. Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dan, how do you feel on this?
Sure.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimously. So we'll, we'll hear that on our July 12th meeting. And thank you very much, Mrs. Kilday. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, what else, what do we have now? 7:15. We have a couple of minutes before we, we can move on to petition 945. How about, how about some minutes, guys? Anybody review the minutes of February 24, 2021? Any changes, deletions, corrections, or additions? Now's the time to do it because Alana's not here to defend herself. I didn't see any corrections on it. I don't know anybody else.
No, that's good. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 24, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of February 24. All those in favor say aye. A voice vote, Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dan, you good?
I'm good.
And myself, yes. Motion passes to accept the minutes of February 24, 2021. Okay, how about, might as well do them quick, the minutes of April 12, 2021? Anybody have any changes, deletions, additions, or corrections? The run, I have, I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 12, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented for the April 12, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. All those in favor say aye. Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, seeing that it's 7:15, we can move on to petition number 945. 945. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 14, 2021, 7:15 PM via Zoom on the application by Reginald Matthews for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at 34 Cedar Street, Halifax, Mass., 02338. Said property is owned by Reginald Matthews of 34 Cedar Street, as shown on the assessor's map, 131 Lot 3, Book 51100, Page 39. The applicant is seeking a new special permit for an existing in-law apartment in accordance with the Halifax zoning bylaws, Section 167.7, Schedule of Use Regulations, and 167.7D12, Arizona residential. Petition number 945. Mr. Matthews, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you tonight?
Thanks. Now, what, what did we do with this before? We had a, did we have a special permit for the in-law?
Yes, we did.
Was, and then was it changed or had conditions as a duplex? Do I remember that correctly?
Nothing's changed to my, to my knowledge, so it's steady as she goes.
Hall's quiet on the western front, right?
Yes, indeed.
34 Cedar, so no changes, Mr. Matthews? Same blood relative, immediate family member, rather? Everything's good?
Everything is good, yes.
No changes, no, no walls taken down, nothing open, nothing like that?
No.
Gentlemen, any questions of Mr. Matthews?
The utilities are shared and everything? I think he might have said. Yep.
There are, what is shared is the water because it's a well and the separate.
But not electric or?
No, they're separate units. They've always been, been separate since construction.
Was this the only permit on file from 1998? Is that correct?
We bought the house in 98. And we got the special permit I bought in 11?
April 12, 2010. How's that sound?
Okay, yep.
Close enough, close enough.
There's one from 98 too, right, though?
Yes, yeah, I think the original one, Pete, was 1998, April 15th. Any other questions, gentlemen?
So is this an income-producing apartment?
They pay me, yes.
But it's still an immediate family member, though, correct?
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay.
So, Bert, in 2010, they have a permit for an income-producing apartment. So that makes it a duplex, right?
A special permit, petition number 735, for a special permit to convert your single-family home with an in-law apartment to a single-family home with an income-producing apartment located at 34 Cedar Street, Halifax, Mass., as shown on the assessor's map. The conditions for granting the special permit shall run with the owner of the property, shall run with the owner of the property and not with the property. The special permit is non-transferable. Should the conditions for granting the special permit no longer exist, the special permit becomes null and void. The special permit is granted for a period of five years. Upon expiration of the permit, the applicant shall come back before the board and apply for an extension. The special permit was granted based on the plans and testimony presented at the hearing. Any changes from what was presented approved must be brought back to the zoning board of appeals. That was in 2010. Bob?
So the last name on this, on petition back in 2010 and 1998 was McGee. And you have a last name Matthews.
All right, there's a little bit of a story to that, if you're ready.
Of course there is.
For 60 years, I was known as McGee because my mother doctor'd my birth certificate. And then when I went to the registry for the real ID, they had a problem with my birth certificate. And it's found out that my mother doctor'd it, but my name is Reginald Daniel Matthews.
But you were the same person that applied in 2010 and 1998. You didn't think this was going to be easy, did you?
That's a new one.
Yeah, it is a new one.
Who was in the in-law apartment now?
My daughter.
Your daughter?
Yeah.
So are we renewing a special permit for an in-law apartment or an income-producing apartment, making it a duplex?
What's the advantage of making it a duplex?
It's a two-family home, then.
You can rent to anyone at that point.
Okay, how would I go about doing that?
Well, the applicant is seeking a new special permit for an existing in-law apartment. That's what's being petitioned for.
That's what I want today, but maybe at another time. Could I go through the motions to go through and make it a duplex?
I don't see why you, why you couldn't, but...
Okay, that's for another time.
I, I would suggest that only because, in at least my view, I don't know about how the other members would feel. I feel that would be a substantial change to what you're petitioning for tonight and what you applied.
What I want is status quo.
That would be a whole other process, I think. Bob, I think it would have to go through the building inspector to see, you know, if it meets code and all that kind of thing. Where, where this would be an extension of what's, what was applied for back in 2010. But, you know, it's certainly, Mr. Matthews, within your, within your right to do that down the road.
That's, that's down the line a bit.
Yeah, on a substantial change, I feel, I don't know what the other board members, I feel that they'd have to re-advertise it and all that other thing, so...
That's fine, we'll, we'll just do what we're doing tonight.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I'm looking at the 2010 special permit. I mean, we, we don't, we don't, a lot, a lot of what I'm reading doesn't jive with the stuff we normally do. So we don't normally give special permits for multifamily units, basically, was, I think it's multifamily. I don't know if it's a duplex because there's a whole set of expectations that duplexes have. And also, we don't do a five-year, I mean, all of this stuff is, Bert, maybe you know, and Kaziah, maybe you know, I, this is pretty unusual to grant a special permit for basically what is an in-law apartment to become an income-producing apartment.
Because Ariel was on the board when, when we, when we were doing this, so he's familiar with it.
So my question is, right now, it's in, it's not an in-law apartment, it's an income-producing apartment?
Well, it is, it's family.
Yeah. No, 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 but what was granted was it was changed from a single-family home with an in-law apartment to a single-family home with an in, income-producing unit. Now you're asking, this, the petition says for an existing in-law apartment, well, real technically, you don't have an existing in-law apartment right now, if I'm reading all this right. Right now, you have an income-producing apartment.
It was, it was passed as an in-law apartment.
Yes.
At the time, 2010 was passed as an in-law apartment.
In the, in, I don't know, I don't know, how did the other members feel? It specifically stated that it was for a five-year period as a, as an in-law apartment to a single-family house with an income-producing apartment located at 34 Cedar Street, Halifax, Mass. And that was, and that was in 2010, and it was for a period of five years. So I should think it would revert back to an in-law apartment without a special permit for a, because certainly a duplex or an income-producing apartment wouldn't expire, as far as I know. So I think we're, we're back to, as, as the Matthews applied, as a, an existing in-law apartment in accordance with the town of Halifax bylaws, 167.7, Schedule of Use.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Unless somebody disagrees, you know?
No, trying to get it straight.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. I think if anything, they have, they have no approvals for anything right now because that would have run out, so...
Right.
But I think we can approve this on the merits of this application.
Right. It, it met the criteria both in 1998 and met the criteria again in 2010. However, there was that five-year permit, permit for, for the in-law, income-producing, if now where it's expired and the Matthews are applying for the in-law apartment. That, that's what I feel is in front of us, that's what we should be voting on. Jerry, how do you feel about that?
No, you've cleaned, you've cleared that up. I was a little confused there.
So, hi, Isaiah, you all good with this?
I'm good with it.
Okay. All right, then, is there any other discussion or comments? Mr. Matthews, you have any, any abutters that would like to jump in on this and contribute? I just see resident, resident. Charlie, we got anyone that wants to speak to this?
I don't see any comments, and I don't see, you know, well, I don't see anybody with an raise, let's put it that way.
Okay, well, seeing there's no indication, wait a minute, I just mixed up with... I'll accept a motion from someone regarding petition number 945 as a member of the boards. Voting on this is Isaiah Nasrela, Jerry Joy, Bob Durgan, Pete Poselin, and myself, voting on it. So if, could I get a motion then from someone, please?
I'll make a motion for petition 945 as presented to renew the special permit for the existing in-law apartment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded that? I missed it.
Me.
Because I am, oh, okay. So I have a motion on the floor and a second to accept petition number 945 as presented. I'll ask a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Dan, how do you feel about this?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. There you go. So I would suggest you give Alana a call tomorrow or possibly the day after, we'll get the paperwork all up and running. Go down to the registry of deeds and she'll have that whole process for you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all your effort and everything. Have a wonderful night.
All right, thank you very much. Good night.
Thanks to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alana is with us. Alana, are you there?
I am here. I am sorry that I was late.
No problem. I don't know if you, well, either that, I'll give you a call tomorrow or something, bring you up to date with petition 944. The attorney is representing the, the Gibbons is going to send a letter of extension to the 65-day period until July 22nd. And we voted to extend their presentation date until our July 12th meeting at 7:05 for petition number 944.
Okay, and I will have the video from Charlie, I'm assuming, tomorrow, so I can watch it.
Okay, awesome. And, and the Matthews are going to call you tomorrow and give them the process of what they have to do now with the registry of deeds and all that fun stuff?
Yep, I will be in the office from 9 to 2.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
All right, bye-bye now. All right, what else do we have, guys? We have the, the bills. We have the express newspaper for petition number 944, 70 Oak Street, and for the advertisement for petition 945 for a total of $168 for the both of them. Do I have a motion to accept in the invoice for payment?
I'll make a motion to accept the advertisement cost for petition 944, 945, and pay, pay them as stated.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to pay the invoice for petitions 944 and 945. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye with a roll call. Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Dan, I know you don't like even paying bills, so I won't even ask. Okay.
Well, this is for advertising. He's famous, celebrity.
It is, yeah, I'm still trying to get over, yeah, trying to get over walking into Stop &amp; Shop and seeing Dan watch me.
Hey, I know him!
Okay.
And somebody!
We have some correspondence from the board of selectmen with a reorganization memo for 2021. We have Chairman Gordon C. Andrews, Vice Chairman Troy Garen, and Clerk Ashley A. DeCessa. Okay, where else are we? Talent Bank forms. We do have a application in here from Mr. David M. Macio for a position to be considered on the zoning board of appeals. Just so everybody knows, other business, the 40B Comprehensive Permit for the Country Club of States, petition number 920, July 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Oh, yeah, we're going to be up and running with that again. Our next scheduled meeting is July 12th. What else do we have? I think that's it. Everything else is... My other correspondent I have here from the fire chief regarding different petitions has been extended for 70 Oak Street until next month, so we'll hold on to that in, in the next one. Oh, yes, we also have a, a second application. Oh, how did I miss that? There are, there are two people besides Mr. Macio. We also have a Talent Bank application form for the alternate position on the zoning board of appeals submitted by Mr. Tom Millius of 357 South Street in Halifax. So that'll be coming up shortly, I would imagine. Anything else? Alana, what else do we have? What did I forget?
I don't think you forgot anything. You were perfect, Bert, perfect.
No, see, that's scary right there. That's scary right there.
Good job.
All right, yeah, I don't, I don't see anything else. We all good? Anything else, gentlemen? Anything in new business or anything? It's seeing that it's almost seven thirty. I know Isaiah is ready to fall asleep back there. I can see him. He was only up at two. How are we doing? We all good?
Well, good.
All right, then, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. I'll take a, Isaiah?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Dan, are you good? Are you sure? Charlie, thank you so very much. I appreciate everything. Alana?
Have a nice everybody.
See you all.
See you soon.